Good evening. I'd like to call our board meeting to order, please. Thank you. And ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now Board Member Stacy Mills will read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Stacy. The first item on our agenda this evening is Item A, and this is a board celebration for Character Counts Week. And as Tara comes to the microphone, I'm going to go ahead and put the motion on the table, and that is that the Board of Education proclaim the week of October 18th through the 24th of 2020 as Character Counts Week in the Waterloo Schools.
So move.
Thank you, Jesse. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Astor. And discussion. With that, I'll turn it over to Tara Thomas, our Director of School and Community Relations, to give us a little update. And we've got some people here to present tonight. Bruce, yay.
Thank you, Shanley. We are actually streaming live right now on Facebook. I'm Tara Thomas, the Director of School and Community Relations. And I want to bring up Bruce Clark, a man many of you are familiar with, both as a friend, colleague, and in this case, for tonight's celebration, one of the founders of Character Counts in our community. We were chatting before the meeting, and I believe, Bruce, you said it was the early 2000s when you started the endeavor locally and have chaired the board and been a part of it ever since. So I'd like to socially distance from the mic as I continue streaming live with my face covering to allow Bruce to take the celebration from here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tara. And thank you, Board, for your support. We appreciate it. Our committee this last year has recognized eight recipients of Champions of Character in the Cedar Valley: organizations, businesses, and individuals. This group included Sportability of Iowa, the Rooted Carrot Co-op Market, Dylan Mac, Brantay Wells, Vern Fish, the Rise Program with U&amp;I Athletic Department, served pro at Blackrock County, and lastly, the East High Army JROTC. And we'll have another recognition from that, too, after your business, I guess.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. And could you also introduce the other individual here that came along this evening? It's hard to talk and stream at the same time, so I'll step back from the mic.
Yeah, we'd like to invite from the Robert D. and Billy Ray Center at Drake, one of our favorite homeboys, rather, Scott Racker, to make a special presentation.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Lindeman, and community citizens that are hopefully watching the streaming of the important work that's being done to enrich the schools, students, and families in Waterloo, it's an honor for me to be with you. The first time I stood in this boardroom, I was a senior in Waterloo West High School with a student-led recognition to honor Edward Kirschenbrock, who is now the Kirschenbrock Auditorium. So it's really kind of emotional and full circle to have the opportunity to come back home to Waterloo to make such a significant recognition and award from the state of Iowa and Character Counts. The Robert D. and Billy Ray Center at Drake University mission is to improve civility through character development and ethical leadership. We began as a vision of Governor Ray in 1997 with one 5th grade classroom in Iowa using the Six Pillars of Character, grew to a statewide initiative, including many engagements in the Waterloo area, including the schools, that many of them, even with Leader and Me, still use the Six Pillars of Character in the preschools or using the Character Counts preschool initiative. And it was through that solid base that took place in Iowa that just last year, in July of 2019, that the Ray Center became the global home to Character Counts. We now serve over 8 million youth across our nation and the world. The proclamation that you have before you identifying Character Counts Week, one that you've passed multiple times over a decade, is part of what is happening all across the country in the next week. In fact, the longest-standing United States bipartisan resolution that is cosponsored by Senator Grassley, of course, from Iowa, and Senator Stabenow, Debbie Stabenow, from Michigan, is the longest-running bipartisan resolution in our United States Senate. And I think we can all agree right now is a time, on my one brief high horse, that with the COVID pandemic and the related uncertainties that that has, with the racial equity issues that we continue to work on in our communities, our state, and our country, and the polarization we see in our country, and not just politically, it's a lot of many other things. I think that you will find and acknowledge, and you've seen in the people that have come through these schools in your service, that it's character and the character development that helps provide solutions to those challenges. And you, at this board table, are doing that every meeting and every day. So I want to thank you for that as a proud product of Waterloo. Your predecessors that guided the efforts when I was in school have continued to do that, and I'm very proud to continue to keep track of what's happening in Waterloo and see it as a shining example. And with that, I would like to ask if Lieutenant Colonel Keith and Cadet Griggs could come up socially distanced appropriately. They represent the East High JROTC. Now typically, our Iowa Character Awards would be recognized in a banquet in July, and that was not applicable this year. But we pivoted, and we were very fortunate that KDSM Fox 17 out of Des Moines and Fox in Cedar Rapids preempted an hour of primetime programming August 4th, and then again, two weeks ago, when the football game wasn't able to be held, to air a one-hour special on the Iowa Character Award, of which the MediaCom 22 is also carrying. And I mention that so the citizens, if they get a chance, can see the video that I know is going to be sent out to the Board. The JROTC has had a profound and significant impact in not only the lives of the young people that are involved, that's clearly evident, but through their modeling to other students, and not just students at East, but across the entire district. And when you look at the concepts of social-emotional growth, you look at teaching, advocating, encouraging, enforcing when needed, but most significantly, modeling, great character. And the one thing I want to mention is, when you listen to that video, it's right in the opening statement, and I believe it's you, Lieutenant Colonel Keith, that says, "Developing good character is hard work." And every parent, every teacher, every leader, every business organization manager knows and understands this. And what Lieutenant Colonel Keith and Cadet Griggs are doing to inspire others to the higher attributes of their best selves through the character development that's coming is why they are being recognized with our statewide award for our school of character. I know your time is valuable tonight. I'll speak with you anytime on any other issues related to character development and ethical leadership and civility, but right now, we're going to thank you, and I would be honored to present this award to Lieutenant Colonel Keith and Cadet Griggs.
Congratulations.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you very much. Bruce, can I take a picture? So thank you for your time.
Scott, thank you so much for taking the time to be here. We really appreciate it. It's an honor to have you here. Very proud alum. We've got lots of West High and East High folks up here, so yay, nice to see you. And I would love to, if we may, I'm kind of melding Items A and B together at this board celebration. Colonel, would you like to say a few words? Cadet, would you like? We'd love to hear from you if you are willing.
So I really just want to thank the Waterloo School District for, and the incredible students that we have. And I really want to thank the Ray Center for recognizing character, good character. And I will tell you, our cadets, our students, making an incredible impact in our community every day, inside that school building, outside the school building. Just this week alone, between helping clean veterans' gravestones that was at the Elmwood Cemetery, to volunteering at the food bank, it's these students that are doing the hard work, they're in their community, and they're making a difference. And it's just, it is a great way to celebrate their achievements. And just want to thank them and thank the Ray Center on behalf of the JROTC program. Cadet Griggs, would you like to say anything?
Oh goodness. It's very easy to say that the JROTC program at East has definitely made me the person that I am today. And we work so hard to make sure that the students that we do have in JROTC, and we work really hard to affect the students outside of JROTC, to uphold core values of what it is to be a citizen anywhere, and that whatever you do, you need to work hard at it, and that's what really matters.
Thank you, Cadet Griggs. Thank you so much. And congratulations again. Yeah. Yeah. And I, go ahead, Sue, if you have something. Oh, okay. I just want to say congratulations again to the East High JROTC group. Yay, for being named the organization. And Bruce, I want to thank you for all your efforts. And as you know, Character Counts continues to be important in our district. And with that, I want to make sure that we get this passed. So I would, we've got the motion on the table, and I assume all those in favor, would you please signify by saying aye for approving Character Counts Week, October 18th through the 24th of 2020?
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. The chair votes aye. Motion carried. Next week will be our Character Counts Week. Awesome. We'll keep taking a few more pictures here.
Push yourself internationally out there.
Yes. It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, Mr. Racker. Thank you.
I'd just like to comment to thank particularly Colonel Keith his well-deserved award. You know, throughout the years, we've learned leadership is a universal skill, and US Military has the best leadership program in the world, so our thanks are actually to you for bringing it to Waterloo schools and allowing students such as Ms. Griggs here to already recognize importance in their own personal life. So I think it's one of the most important programs we have, and many thanks to you and all your colleagues that really brought world-class leadership into Waterloo schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we'll move on, then, to information from individuals and delegations. And this evening, Board Secretary Pam Arndorfer will share our public comments that have been received. I would like to remind our public that they have three minutes to speak, and so our Board Secretary will be reading them as briskly as possible. And if some of the comments get to three minutes, we will respectfully ask that you conclude those, but those will be provided to the Board electronically, so we will have the complete amount of information that has been given.
Correct. I did share with anybody who emailed, I did share with them that I would read comments aloud, but that they would also be shared out with the Board members after the meeting tonight.
Perfect.
So when I'm done here, I'll sit down at my computer and send them all out to you.
Thank you.
So I do have, and I am just going to read these in the order in which we received them. The first is from Matt Gibbon. Matt listed, had some concerns as far as edgenuity and the virtual learning. So he starts off, number one, edgenuity, quizzes are not matching lessons. Also, some of the diagnostic quizzes are way over the level of the grade the child is working on. In our family situation, these specific quizzes for our 2nd grader, who was doing simple addition and subtraction leaving 1st grade, these quizzes were on double-digit addition, subtraction, and word problems that were algebraic, were very stressful. Presenting math diagnostic quizzes on material that he has never addressed did not make sense to us. The other issue we have noted is that there are actual repeat lessons, not repeat concepts. Concepts being repeated make perfect sense. Repeating the exact same lesson over and over is redundant and more just memorizing to finish the assignment, or basically loss of interest on the student's part. We have supplemented work of our own to reinforce concepts and keep our children engaged. Number two, the way the teacher-to-student ratio is structured must be very problematic for the teachers. There are way too many students from different grade levels being assigned to one poor teacher. This severely limits access to the teacher. Communication with teachers is very important. I am sure that you would agree. I believe the assumption was that the parents and guardians would absorb a teacher contact role. However, there is very little contact with actual teachers for our students. I do not want to criticize the teacher. This seems to be the way the district built the curriculum. When the pandemic first started, the teachers already had their classes and successfully communicated via Zoom to meet their students. That is lacking now for virtual students. I know we have discussed the resources you are being dedicated to basically the need of processing the back-and-forth applications of in-person to virtual and virtual to in-person. So what can we do to think outside the box here? Virtual learning students need more interaction with teachers or learning assistants. Who can help the district find the clerical staff needed to process the applications so that teachers can be delegated to students? Another aspect that is missing is connections with other students participating in the same curriculum. The school did so well earlier with teachers bringing the students together. That element is completely lacking this new year. As I suggested in our conversations, in what way does the district need help with this? Not all parents have the time to facilitate Zoom calls for classes, but I know some who would make time. I also do not know the state guidelines surrounding that idea. I do know that our church and others have joined in partnership with the schools to do book readings and events in the past. Why can't that be incorporated with facilitating virtual classes, class meets that enable virtual students to interact? There must be some way for us to think outside of the box to increase interaction with others for the virtual learning students. Time? Okay. He goes on to state about three more statements, so I will send that out to the Board. Another letter was received from Mary Wilber, her address 5721 Applewood Drive. "Thank you for your service to our community through the school board. The reason for contacting you is to share some reflections on the virtual school programming. This fall, I began teaching my grandchildren in 2nd grade and kindergarten with the virtual program. I am a former public school teacher and college professor with two master's degrees. My daughter and husband are working full-time and have asked me to assist in their children's education and have given permission to communicate about our experiences. One, the curriculum program skips lessons and does not allow for sufficient practice before testing. Number two, many times what is being tested is not the same as to what is being taught. Number three, the teacher at Orange Elementary, Ms. Monahan, is wonderful, especially given the impossible situation. She has 93 students. She only meets with her students once every two weeks for 15 minutes. Imagine being a five-year-old and only seeing a live person once every two weeks for 15 minutes. And finally, there is no classroom interaction. This is an unprecedented time. Technology has its ups and downs, but most likely will be the way of the future. We have to navigate these waters together. The lack of classroom and teacher time is not acceptable. No, we did not know this was the way it was going to be handled. There was barely any information given several days before visual schools started. It is hard to believe that there is a teacher shortage given the close proximity to you and I. If all the virtual students went back to in-person schooling, where would the teacher numbers come from to ensure safe distancing? Thank you for listening. I appreciate your efforts. We are trying to do our best. I have so much more I would be willing to share if it would be helpful. Sincerely, Mary Wilber." Okay. The third letter comes from Becky Mohorn, WEA president. Becky's address is 3516 Verralta Drive, Cedar Falls. Today, Becky says she's speaking on behalf of the teachers of Waterloo in response to some of the issues discussed at the last school board meeting. I know that parents have some very legitimate concerns surrounding virtual learning and the use of technology at home. I know some students are struggling with the platform being used for virtual learning. This is the same program many districts are using for their virtual learners and has been used by Waterloo schools for many years in our performance-based diploma academies. The frustration parents and students are experiencing is real, but asking teachers to teach virtually while also teaching the students in their classrooms is just not practical or realistic. In addition, it is unfair to both teachers and students. Imagine a classroom teacher with students in their classroom trying to help not just one student, but multiple students with technical problems while also trying to manage their own in-person learners. A teacher's time is accounted for from the beginning of the day to the end of the day already, so adding another variable and more time commitments to them would do a disservice to both online and in-person learners. In other words, it would not be the intent, but the unintended consequence would still be less learning occurring in the classroom and at home. Although that would not be the intention of the teacher, the parent, or the student, it would greatly diminish the effectiveness of the teacher and, by extension, our students' education. The reality is that these are really two jobs that one teacher just cannot do, both of them by themselves. We have spoken with teachers from other districts doing both online and in-person learning, including Cedar Falls and Union. They are overwhelmed by this and note that it is just simply not an effective model. We, the teachers of Waterloo, appreciate the difficult and trying circumstances we are all experiencing right now. We know our current situation is not ideal in regards to our students' education or well-being, but respectfully, we do not believe that teachers teaching both virtually and in-person is in the best interest of our students or our teachers. It just would not fix the problems we are trying to address here. If you would like some specific examples, I could provide an itemized list to you to review at a later date. Thank you for your time and consideration." Okay. Got three more. This is an email from Kit Ming Viera. "To whom it may concern, I am a mother who enrolled the two children in the school district, 1st and 4th grade. Thank you so much for taking time to collect our concerns regarding the virtual school. Below are my concerns. The lesson plan is not planned, for the demonstration is too wordy, not enough visual to help students understand the concept. For example, my 1st grader is working on decomposing teen number to use it for addition and subtraction. The only teaching video is a person talking for a couple minutes straight to explain that, quote, 'When you want to add 8 plus 5, you need to first take 2 out of the 5 and add the 2 to 8 to make 10. Now, since we took out 2 from the 5, there's 3 left. Then we add the 10 and 3 together and get 13. Got it? Let's move on.'" How can a 1st grader grasp the concept with only one example? And with individual practice, when the student answers a question wrong, it does not tell them what they got wrong, so students do not know what they should work on in order to improve. The instruction, practice, and individual practice are lacking responses provided by a teacher who is vital in a lesson plan. The quiz does not test what is being taught, which is also contradicting to how a qualified lesson plan should work. Two, communication is lacking. Teachers are overwhelmed, basically the parents are the one monitoring the student's performance, but the parents are not giving extra tools to help the students. Teachers or other staff needs to follow up with the parents or guardians weekly to check the student progress, submit concerns, and find official response. So parents are not getting a runaround by trying to solve the problems themselves because no official response are given in a timely manner. Weak at a glance is confusing. We can often find errors in the documents that we are confused about what needs to be done. Since LA math and science social studies are in three to four different pages, it is very easy to miss. It will work way better to put all the assigned desk of the day in one box. Number three, system crashes. The PathBlazer has bugs and there is no way to report it. There will be students working on the unit, and then a week later, all the progress is gone. The teachers did not know how to fix it, and the student was forced to go through the lessons again, which is a waste of time and does not help the student's progress. Number four, PathBlazer is not a good option for individual elementary learning. While the high school needs just one platform to finish their schoolwork, the elementary students are going to, 1, PathBlazer, 2, Google Classroom to submit written work, 3, PairDeck to submit independent read-aloud assignments, 4, Epic to read books, and 5, third-party math-language arts game. Number five, no repetitions are given. The PathBlazer lessons just go through the lesson, and it does not allow students to connect what they've learned with what they are going to learn. Again, this can be improved with a better written lesson plan. I bet if a PathBlazer lesson is presented in front of teachers and principals, they will definitely fail the lesson plan." Stop. Okay. All right. And then we have one from Dustin Lies, L-I-E-S. Dustin says, "Hello, my son's name is," and he states his son's name, "he started kindergarten virtually this year at Kingsley. I would like to address the issues we have encountered and share some of the changes we hope will be considered moving forward. The overarching issue I have is that currently it feels as though virtual students are second-class citizens in a way. I don't believe most of us want to be teaching virtually, but we feel it is safest for our children and best for our community. How disheartening is it when that virtual learning consists almost entirely of working through a less-than-user-friendly system and watching YouTube videos? I won't delve into every issue I have with the PathBlazer edgenuity software. It would take too long, but suffice it to say, it has many areas for improvement. Beyond that, and more importantly, there is next to no actual instruction provided for virtual students. Neither my wife nor I are trained educators, and yet we are responsible for coming up with lessons and activities to teach our children. When this option was announced, I was relieved and thankful about my son's safety, but I envisioned a quasi-classroom setting conducted virtually. Suggested activities, virtual reading time, even just time for kids to see each other and interact virtually is almost nonexistent. The first offered session of virtual instruction was just last week and lasted around 30 minutes. I'm not going to trash Waterloo schools or bemoan the problems I'm sure many other families are experiencing more intensely than ours, but I do want to voice the suggestion. There should be a virtual-only teachers with no in-person responsibilities at the same ratio that there are in-person teachers to students. The resources the school is saving from us doing the vast majority of planning and gauging our students, our children, should be used to help support virtual learners. Those teachers should be available, if not daily, then multiple times per week to do guided instruction, reading, even just allowing kids to socialize. This should have been the priority and structure from day one, but I understand this is a very difficult task and appreciate the efforts the district has made. It isn't too late to change and put the focus, time, and resources into helping virtual families who believe they are doing their civic duty by reducing in-person numbers. Families that have chosen to play a larger role in their child's education should, in my opinion, be encouraged and supported. Education for young children requires instruction and guidance. I hope those will be focused on moving forward for virtual learners. I know that is difficult, and I feel for all the people involved in this process. Their work doesn't go unnoticed. However, I think we can do a lot better than what is currently offered and owe it to our children to try to provide better. I hope you will consider this seriously and attempt to improve the virtual learning experience. We are certainly not out of the COVID-19 woods, and parents should never have to choose between equality education and their child's safety. Thank you, Dustin Lies." And the final one is from LeAnn and Derek and LeAnn Klinkenberg. "Dear school board members, we are writing today to thank the district for making a virtual learning option possible during the COVID pandemic. While we have appreciated this choice, we have concerns about the mismanagement, lack of transparency, inconsistencies across grade levels, and minimal guidance provided by the district. We are also concerned about the district's well-publicized attitude that in-person learning is the best educational model, so that is where the district is prioritizing its resources. District administrators have consistently repeated this stance in local news stories and previous school board meetings every time a concern has been raised about virtual learning. This public attitude makes the virtual students sound like they are less important than in-person students. It also arrogantly assumes that all children learn the same and that parents made the wrong choice for their children in choosing the virtual option. Some students, like ours, need this option due to medical reasons. The district's very public disdain for online instruction and the subsequent lack of designated resources for it have ensured our students were not set up for success and have not been given equitable access to an appropriate education. It is offensive that school administrators assume they know what is best for our children during this pandemic and have minimized virtual learning resources based on that assumption. Here are a few examples of how mismanagement, lack of transparency, inconsistencies, and minimal guidance have impacted our virtual learning experience. All of the assignments were loaded into the edgenuity platform starting on August 24. When virtual students started on August 31st, they were already a week behind. I cannot adequately explain how frustrating this was for our kids or how it immediately killed their motivation on the very first day. Making sure the virtual platform was ready to go with correctly-dated assignments should have been a priority before the first day of learning. The fact that such a simple management task was overlooked speaks to the lack of resources designated to this learning choice. Two, high school students were not initially informed that they needed to earn seven credits this semester to keep up with their peers, or that the first four classes loaded into their accounts were not or that the first four classes loaded into their accounts were not the only classes they needed to complete. Not only did high school students start off a week behind like everyone else, but they weren't initially told the first four classes needed to be completed by October thirty, so they could finish another three classes by January fourteen. The only reason we figured any of that out is because we noted inconsistencies in vague school emails and asked how they were supposed to get seven credits done when they only had four classes in their account. The first email even mentioning that high school students needed to earn seven credits this semester didn't come until well after the year had started. And it didn't say anything about students needing to take other classes or how they were to go about doing that. By the time we got answers to that email, we were more than two weeks into the year. How are the students supposed to be successful when everything was incorrectly set up and there was no clear communication about expectations?
Time.
Okay. Um, there's rather lengthy addition on the back of this one, so I will send these all out to you here in the next few minutes.
Thank you, Pam. And thank you to our public for, for submitting those. I appreciate them taking the time to do that and they will be sent to the board, so.
And I have a question on that. Do we totally discourage someone from coming here?
No, we've given them the option. And if they come, we've asked them to practice social distancing and wear a mask and wait to be acknowledged, but all these, enter, register, but they are, they have been allowed to.
Have the right to come.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Pam, you wanna?
Yes. In fact, um, quite a few, I would say probably two or three of those that did send in had specifically said they did not want to come in person, but they preferred that they, it would be read to the board.
So we made sure that they were informed. Yep. All right, then we can move on to our consent agenda this evening, which consists of five items. The minutes of the September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty regular board meeting and the October first, twenty-twenty special board meeting, which is item C. Um, the personnel appointments and adjustments, which are item D. The bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings, which is item E. The delegate assembly representative, which is item F. And the destruction of audio tapes and minutes of board closed sessions, which is item G. Um, so I would ask, are there any items that board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda? C. Item C is in Charlie. Okay. All right, um, then could I have a motion to place items D, E, F, and G on the table, please?
So move.
Thank you, Sue, and a second by Jessie. And all those in favor of approving those four items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item C, which are the minutes of the last meeting. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty regular board meeting.
So move.
Thank you, Jessie, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, India, and discussion.
My question just was, if, if I'm not at a board meeting, do I still vote or do I abstain? For the minutes? Yeah.
Oh. You can approve them?
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Cause I wasn't here either.
Yeah. It's the only one I've missed.
Right. Well, and, and as I, as I understand it, Pam, and correct me if I'm wrong, the minutes are really the reflection of what occurred during the meeting. So you're not, in, in, you weren't there and in that I wasn't there, we don't have comments in there, but we are approving that the, the meeting did happen as stated with the people who were there.
And you weren't there.
I know. Neither was I, so, okay. All right, then all those in favor of approval of the minutes of the September twenty-eighth regular board meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item H, which is on page twenty-four. And this is the program of studies. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two high school program of studies and course catalog.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Aster. And discussion, we have Sharice Ortmann here this evening. Um, and for our public, they should know that we also spent, the board spent two hours last week, um, going through the first draft of this. So the board has also had, and had a lot of questions too, so I will open it up tonight to you, Sharice, and then to the board for their follow-up questions, please.
Wonderful. I'm also joined by Jeff Ross, who's the Executive Director of Professional and Technical Education.
Pardon me, Jeff, I should have introduced you to.
Along with Dr. Mohorn, who's the Associate Superintendent of Educational Services. So just a quick background. Each year, a revised high school program of studies is brought to the Board of Education for review and approval, and it reflects the transformative changes in the continuous improvement journey of our high school programming. Our goal has been to approve the program of studies early to ensure a timeline of modifications, dissemination, and communication. The program of studies reflects the work of several departments within educational services, innovative teachers, and administrators. The comprehensive document mirrors the wide range of diverse learners through balanced and opportunity-based courses. I also want to make note that it supports our mission to prepare students for college, career, and citizenship. And a brief summary, we have added eleven WCC courses to the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two course guide. We've added four general courses. We've added four, we've dropped fourteen, so you can see there's a give and take, adding fifteen, dropping fourteen. We had one name change. And we had several general content areas that we made revision, such as SCED coding. NCAA now approves edgenuity platforms. JROTC at East High, the revision, was updated this year. And then also Regents Admission Index numbers and courses were adjusted. Questions that you have for our team this evening?
Quick question, was earth science a requirement at one time? Earth science, was that a requirement?
It is required.
It is required?
Yep. Earth space science is required for graduation and taken by ninth graders?
Okay.
Yes.
But the pre-I-B was the?
Pre-I-B was dropped because it was added to the integrated science courses. So if you were gonna take, you wanted to get your three years of science, you would take the integrated science that integrates in earth space instead of taking a separate pre-I-B earth space.
Got it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Sharice, so this year seniors did not take that change, correct?
Twenty-twenty-two.
Right.
Correct.
So that curriculum is, starts with this class that's come, that'll be seniors is coming here?
The earth science, yeah.
Yes.
This year's seniors took earth science.
But not all of them did. If they were, if they, freshman year, the class of twenty-twenty-one still had the option cause this didn't start until.
No, they made Josie take it. She's a senior. She took physical science in eighth grade and she had to take earth science as a freshman. It was required.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Yep. It would have been three, yes, it would have been three years ago that we changed that over. Her senior year, yes, correct.
I have a request. We talked a little bit about the, in the board workshop, but it seems like, uh, for next year, I would certainly like to see strengthening the engineering core classes. I think we're, we're pretty weak in that area. And I'd like to see some, some really, really serious work in that area to see what we can add and where we can add it in order to strengthen that whole curriculum.
I, I encourage you on that.
And my second comment is, um, the evaluation of ingenuity. Who's, where does that fall? The virtual program we've, we've, uh,
That we've adopted?
That we've adopted.
So when, when you look at this, edgenuity is a platform for NCAA, that was something I worked on this summer. We've had edgenuity as a platform at the high schools. I think it's been, has it been ten years, Dr. Lindeman? At least a decade. And to go through that, you have to go through accreditation for the NCAA to see those courses as, um, being legit to, uh, transfer to a college transcript. They don't want a student taking something and breezing through if it doesn't have the standards and the substance to the course. That's what this was about. That's separate from some of the comments that were, um, that started off this evening. There was another part of edgenuity, PathBlazers, and a lot of those were, um, talking about an elementary program that we've never used before. But it partners with edgenuity. PathBlazers is a, is a partnership of edgenuity. But in this program of studies approval, when we submitted the coursework this summer to approve edgenuity as a platform for high school, it was approved by the NCAA as a viable online program. Not all online programs are approved by the NCAA. You have to go through a process of curriculum, assessment, staffing, and the hours that the students spend on those courses.
So that wasn't approved before? How did PBDA do it?
PBDA would take course by course. Pardon?
Weren't they using edgenuity?
Many of them were, didn't qualify.
So the classes that they take in PBDA, they, they're, they were not using edgenuity, is that what you're saying?
No, in PBDA, uh, they were using edgenuity as a platform. But at the time, not all those courses that they were doing in edgenuity were approved. We'd have to go like class by class and submit the approval plat- uh, process. Now, we did a blanket approval.
Oh.
So now edgenuity as a platform is approved, the, the way that we, um, offer it in Waterloo schools for PBDA.
Versus class by class?
Correct.
Okay.
This is, this is separate from using that as a platform for virtual. This is our PBDA, where kids are using it for credit recovery or acceleration, and they're at the building with certified teachers who are navigating that program with them. That's separate from using it now as virtual.
So when we expanded it, uh, for across-the-board virtual learning, we did not evaluate the new components or it just seems to me like a repeated, uh, criticism of it. And it's the same criticisms, like hard to believe they're all wrong. Why did we choose that program as part of our curriculum?
Well, it's a good question. I wasn't, I wasn't the one that was making that decision. I, I think that was a collective decision with Ed Services and I'd probably refer you to Dr. Stephanie Mohorn on that specific or Dr. Lindeman. However, what I can tell you is having worked with edgenuity for acceleration or, um, for students who use it for credit recovery. When we've used it with a teacher in the classroom, it's been very engaging. And it's, it has a nice scope and a flow to it of the courses. And the kids come out of it feeling like they have content knowledge. There's elements of inquiry within it, which you don't see that in a lot of platforms. It's just content. So as far as looking at it as something supplemental to support virtual, it's worked really well in our district in the setting we used it in, which was, um, PBDA.
But with teachers.
Do you think that would just be, we're talking PBDA is high school?
Correct.
Correct. Um, so how do you, how would you view it for K through eight?
Kate, I never looked at.
I think a lot of, a lot of the, the comments that we received or, or questions were younger, younger students and, and being able to engage
Correct.
with teachers and, and classmates at a younger age, so.
These aren't questions right now for Sharice.
For Sharice, uh, do you mind if Dr. Lindeman answers that for the K eight piece? Cause that's not, that's not Sharice's.
I, I can tell you as a parent.
Well, it's, it's part of the program of studies.
Well.
It isn't, no, this is high school. Program of study is high school. So what, what I, what I would like to do, I'm going to address virtual, um, during my board comments. And so if, if that's all right, I can share a little bit more about why it was chosen and all of that with, if, if that's okay. To hold until later unless you want it now.
Uh, it's okay.
Okay.
It's a great, it's a great question, O'Leary. Like, just knowing the, the part that varies. When, when I filled out for, uh, full approval of NCAA for the platform edgenuity, I based it on what we were doing brick and mortar with PBDA.
So we had certified teachers in the room. We had teachers giving immediate feedback with students using it in the room. It was not meant to, I wasn't, um, assessing it and it wasn't approved based on the model of it being used by, by families at home without the guidance of a, um, certified staff.
Okay, so even at the high school, I mean, to me, it, it seems like it needs reevaluation for use at home as opposed to the traditional use we've made of it. Uh, at the high school level, at, at every level, so I think it, it is relevant.
Yeah, I'm gonna respond to a lot of those during my comments, if that's so, uh, what you, the questions you just asked, I am going to respond to those.
Great questions.
I have another curriculum question though.
Sure, Stacy, go ahead.
Something that I would, um, just like, and I know we had talked about it during our, um, our workshop is to get some shop classes back into high school. Um, basic, you know, let's teach kids how to use, use a saw, you know, your basic things, change a tire, you know, things that, um, that we learned when we were in high school, in Waterloo schools, and they really stuck with us. So I would love to see that kind of stuff brought back in.
Sure. And if you'd like to, um, Jeff is here tonight. And that was, that industrial tech, when we looked at dropping that, that was part of that transitional decision. So I'm gonna have Jeff maybe.
Before you go, I do have a question for you. Yeah.
I'm not going anywhere, India. I'll be here all night.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I'm just gonna say, so you said, um, not all of the programs were approved by the NCA, like edgenuity, all those type of, um, virtual platforms. So it's been about ten years. So how often do you kind of look at other options? Because it has been ten years as this program. I know it has worked, but have we looked at other ones that could possibly work with PDA in the future? Have you even done a compa- a cost comparison, I guess, or just options?
I would say, India, that's a really good, um, forward conversation to have when we hire a secondary curriculum person.
Okay.
And, and me just stepping in this summer and looking at the comprehensive nature of edgenuity, they've updated it. Just like any, AP does a course review, IB does a course review, everybody does a course review. Edgenuity actually did a course review recently. So when I filled out the documentation for full platform approval by the NCAA, it was easy. I just had to fit in teacher certification because the content itself, there's a, um, program of studies through edgenuity. And we have our staff even working with the content and helping to create those courses to make them more robust. So some of the work we did ahead of, um, even going virtual, we had teachers who were working with some of the advanced courses who are certified and they were helping to populate that course and make it even more robust and align to Hawkeye outcomes or AP outcomes. So there's a way that you can have the core content, which is, I think, pretty developed because they've done a course review. And then you can have certified teachers help develop that. The problem is, as everyone here knows, that the virtual model is not the PBDA model because it's not brick and mortar and online. It's strictly online at home.
I'm just gonna say, you know, now that we have something to compare it to, because we are looking at this, I do think at some point we're gonna have to come back and say, uh, can we look at options? Because right now, a lot of people are not feeling comfortable with the word edgenuity. You know what I'm saying? So equating that to like, this is something positive. I think at some point we need to come back. Ten years is a long time to look at a curriculum and, you know, not to have anything to compare it to at this point, so.
Yeah, I would say though.
Plato at one time, we've used some different things. This was new. This was, yeah.
Yeah, I would say, uh, it, it is interesting that, you know, getting that full NC, you know, NCAA, you know, approval. Because, I mean, we've seen it, I, you know, I've seen it in the past, not, not here, but other places where athletes not eligible because some online class they took wasn't approved.
And NCAA does.
That factor lies long-term, so.
And they, they.
Okay.
They do approve edgenuity, but you have to, as a district, talk about how then you use the staff to support the content.
Yeah.
And the timing, so that a kid's not finishing in one week, that doesn't seem like they're meeting the standards.
No.
I wanted to just comment, maybe it's not the time, but just real quick. My daughter's an eighth grader. She chose to do online for her own personal reasons. And she, three weeks ago, finally said to me, Mom, I totally get it. She's taking four content classes through the edgenuity as an eighth grader. I get it. I feel like I'm in charge of my learning now. It took her time to learn how to manage her time, to be an autonomous learner, and to know how to study. She had to go back in and teach herself study habits. So for our family, that's just one, but I wanted to give you maybe contrast to some of the other things you've heard. I'm not familiar with PathBlazers at all. It's an elementary platform that partners with edgenuity. But I'm familiar enough with edgenuity that I've watched her get on and it's asynchronous. So she can get on and spend four or five hours a day, or maybe on the weekends if she wants to go back in. And she's become an incredible independent learner. And I also have another colleague whose sons had to go back, but they were actually ahead when they returned after using some edgenuity. So teachers were introducing things that was reviewed for their children. Those are only two stories. I'm not trying to say it's all, but I want to give you another perspective of how other people have received it.
Has she been able to get, um, face-to-face, like classroom experience via Zoom or? Has she been able to get um, face-to-face, like classroom experience via Zoom, or has she been able to get a lot of contact with her teacher?
No, and, and again, she's, has contact with her teacher as needed.
How often?
Every time she emails her. Um, Myla's become incredibly independent, so she hasn't needed too much, but once a week, if she emails, her teacher responds right away. They have to open up the tests for them to test, and every time she says, I need to take a test, her virtual teacher, who's one of four for middle school, is right on it and opening that up, and we had a, a Zoom conference.
Good.
And um, she went over uh, aspects of Edgenuity that I didn't know that were really helpful.
That's, I know, I have a PBDA kid that I'm, is close to our family, and um, the whole thing, I didn't realize that they have to get that test open before they can do anything, so if they forget to say, I need to get that test open, then like, the whole weekend, they just have to twiddle their thumbs, so some of that, I think is maybe we need to get parent training.
So what's the market for the virtual learning? Edgenuity, for example, traditionally, not necessarily this past year, but is it dominant? Does that have ninety percent of the market, ten percent of the market? Are there three players, are there twenty players? What, what's the, what's the landscape in terms of our choices in terms of uh, a virtual learning model?
It's a good question, I don't know, but I can find out.
Okay.
Yeah, it's one of the big players, matter of fact, I would say it's probably the predominant, predominantly used um, platform, but there are others. You know, we used to use Plato at one point in time, and then when we did a review, actually, it's been since I've been the superintendent, so like, that goes back to India's question.
When they did change.
Yeah, we made the change at that point in time, because this was a much better platform. Um, there's Apex, there's, you know, um, the Edgenuity and E twenty twenty are synonymous, right? E twenty twenty, that's what it used to be called, and then it's, so there, there are uh, two or three major players, but there are other players, so. But I would say Edgenuity is probably one of the biggest ones, and I'm, see, I'm, I'm tipping my hand to my report, so my report will be shorter, but um, when um, virtual came in, there, there's only just a handful that are actually able to be used for virtual, and Edgenuity is one of them, so in Iowa, there's really only five that you can even use, so um, that speaks to the evaluation, but I shouldn't have said that, cause I took us away from this, so please go by, well, I'll talk about that more at the end.
And, and also, just so you know, Edgenuity is lovely, we use it for kids to uh, prepare for the ACT. So if kids score low in a certain subject, they get on Edgenuity, it's open to all of our kids in our district, it's not just to kids who are doing it for credit recovery. And they'll go back and study that section, and it's really boosted a lot of our cumulative scores on our ACTs.
I don't wanna forget.
Jeff.
Stacy, your question about industrial techno, industrial tech.
Thank you.
Jeff, yeah.
Jeff, excuse me.
Unlike Sharice, I'm gonna take my mask off for a moment, cause I think we're socially distanced here far enough. I can, I'll start on the engineering front, because I agree, I think one of the biggest things we really need to look at in regards to curriculum and career and technical education is engineering, and I guess really the, the thing we need to figure out, first of all, is of the four major areas within engineering, what would be the major focus, or would be, would it be an all-encompassing um, of civil, chemical, mechanical, and electrical, so it's one of those things that, totally agree, we need to get engineering in. Jesse and I actually talked after the, the board work session last week, and we're on the same page that it's definitely an area we need to look at, but we have to really investigate what is the, which one? My guess is it's gonna lean towards mechanical or electrical uh, compared to civil and chemical, but I, but I'm not sure, you know, maybe it's, it's all of them there, so.
What was the one we had though before, when, uh, what was it, three, four years ago?
It was just Project Leadway.
Project Leadway.
Oh, oh, okay, didn't, sorry.
But there are common, there are, uh, what was it called, engineering fundamentals or something like that? There are common courses in sophomore year in college that are common of all engineering curriculums, so.
You get fluids, fluids covers a lot of areas.
Yeah.
You have fluid dynamics.
Statistics, dynamics, fluids, uh.
I, you know, I went and looked around a couple of the community colleges, I couldn't really find anything that might, might have said intro to any of them, you know, it was stuff that lined up to, you know, whatever program we were going to transfer into, you know, so they might have a statics class that would transfer in, but didn't have like a, kinda, a program, kinda fill it out, you know, to what area you might like, you know, so there, there didn't seem to be a college class aligned to that perfectly, you know.
Yeah, they kinda mix, like if you look at even Hawkeye's curriculum, we've kinda looked at that as an engineering, some strands there. They have the pneumatics, they have the fluids, they have the diesel, which ties into mechanical, there's some electrical, there's just bits and pieces. I actually think potentially Project Leadway has probably the most um, broadest uh, view of um, of uh, engineering in general, so that might be the way to go to, to get a broad view of, of engineering, and then you know, as you continue further, um, we can look at other courses that could be integrated into different programs and figure that out within that. I do know um, on the side of the middle school exploratory that we brought in uh, two years ago, that there is a strand, I think it's in eighth grade actually, is when they get um, Project Leadway, robotics and automation uh, is part of an eighth grade experience, so you'd have a full semester in eighth grade of, of automation and robotics.
Actually, the name was Engineering Mechanics was the, as he said, Iowa State, was the name of the core courses that everybody took.
Yeah. Regardless of your future. Probably back then, I think it was probably part of A-Bet, or, you know, we had like EM numbers that were unique from MVC, whatever we called it, but.
So at Hawkeye, there's nothing, it's just like a basic, we, like, I remember we approved not long ago to send a student to CF for the Project Leadway for Intro to Engineering, correct?
Correct.
Hawkeye doesn't have anything that they call that, that we could offer?
They tend to integrate pieces of engineering into programs, so you'll see, for example, like Jesse talked about pneumatics or fluid, or, you know, kinda the mechanical power. They run it through programs, but they don't come out and call it engineering per se, so it's, if you look through their curriculum, there's definitely strands and pieces of curriculum that definitely tie into the realm of all four major components of engineering. But there's not, I would say, per se, uh, an exact course within that, that domain.
I just feel also, it would be very, it would, it would be very important if we could have that to try to get more females to take, like, when my son took it, I think there were two girls in the class.
Yeah.
So um, if we could make it more, I don't know, feminine friendly too, that, it's something we've been pushing, you know, with all the STEM stuff.
I, I, I agree a hundred percent, I can tell you, actually, we have to renew our, our Perkins Grant every year, and then we have to kinda set goals within that of what our goals are. Um, our number one goal for the Perkins Grant this year is actually non-traditional students into fields that have not been populated by them traditionally. Um, whether that be uh, you know, race, ethnicity, um, gender, uh, we, we're, that's kind of our goals. We wanna really recruit non-traditional students into areas that have non-traditionally been filled by uh, you know, the, and I hate to say typical, cause they, they shouldn't be typical, and that's why we're gonna recruit um, multiple students, and that's one of our top three goals.
No, and I think, you know, I, and I think just that intro class will kinda give us a, a bridge way into what we're already offering out there, I mean, if somebody decided they like mechanical better, then they might go into some of the manufacturing and design classes, they like electrical and, or software, they might filter into some other stuff, you know, it, it kinda, kinda opens that. Okay, which, what classes can else, kinda take it, Career Center will align with, and you know, we create kinda like you say pathways, uh, okay, you like this, why don't you look at this route here a little bit, and wrap some courses here.
Correct. And actually, that ties really right into what Stacy was saying earlier about bringing the trades back. Actually, um, we're investigating avenues or ways we can get more career and technical education back into the high schools right now. Um, part of the potential solution is looking at instructors at the WCC with us expanding to a four-block schedule that actually adds another period where they would be able to, where they would have taught, or they could teach four classes in a semester. Potentially, we're looking at how we can um, maybe, I don't wanna say buy back, but take one of their blocks and put them into an introductory trades course and, and truly bring that back. I can tell you, I'm standing up here with like Band-Aids all over my finger for this, from this weekend, because I didn't have any shop classes in high school, and I really needed to, and so I'm sitting here all cut up because of that. Um, you know, I did take home ec, which was great, because I learned how to sew and cook a little bit, but um, my, my wife is always like, we always have to pay out for plumbing or electric, you can't do anything, and I'm like, well, I'll show you. And then I come in, and I'm all cut up and bleeding, and she's like, you're really showing me, and I'm like, you're right, so I, I agree, I think, you know, and, and that really would tie into the non-traditional too, so broad scope of getting CTE back into the high schools at an introductory level, but also non-traditional students into those, those fields would be great too, but we're working on stuff. Right now, actually, um, one of the biggest obstacles is going to be licensure um, with the Board of Educational Examiners. I've had like three conversations over the last week with them, and they're pretty tight in regards to um, so, so what happens right now at the Career Center is, we can actually, because our instructors are teaching college-level concurrent classes, they actually get vetted by Hawkeye Community College, um, and then of course, they become our instructors. Uh, but they can get uh, vetted to teach a course if they have six thousand hours of experience in a career field and meet other requirements that they have. Uh, they do not need your classically, to be classically uh, trained in educators and go through an education program. So they can teach the concurrent and get the college credit, and because of that, SYP, Senior Year Plus will actually allow them to, us to tie high school credit to that for elective credit. The problem is, is when you look at um, by the state definition, if we're licensure of a highly qualified instructor, they really say you need a classically trained instructor to be able to give credit towards those courses, so we're trying to work through that with the state right now, just trying to figure out what avenues we can do in regards to, because we do have instructors in, in our fields that do have teaching license, but we also have, so let's say we wanted to create a, a trade, Intro to Trades course, and you wanted a little bit of mechanical, manufacturing type things, and we wanted a little uh, plumbing and electrical and construction, well, two of those four instructors came from the field, the other two are classically trained instructors and have teaching license. So I said, well, what happens if you have, you know, teachers of record with the, the licensed teachers? And uh, they're like, and, and bring the other two in as lecturers, or whatever you'd wanna call it over that timeframe, and they, they're pretty um, set that they have to actually be classically trained instructors, so um, they're actually looking at that too, I mean, they're, they're, they know in the big picture of what future-ready Iowa is, and what Governor Reynolds wants, and we're not the only school that's facing this optical, obstacle. Um, I think you and I is graduating six career and technical ed teachers for the entire class at you and I, now think about that. So you're gonna have six teachers coming out of this program, and everybody's gonna want them, so if that's the only way for licensure is six people coming out of you and I, the teaching school, um, you know, we need to figure something out to take advantage of people that have expertise and get them in and have them the ability to teach even the high school courses, not just concurrent courses.
Did you make sure to tell them that we're hiring?
Actually, we had, one, one did student teach for us, so we do have, and actually, his father's a principal in our district, so we have a little insight there if we ever need to.
But they are missing a boat on opportunity, or catching people who are retiring, maybe earlier in their career, and still have years left, they wanna contribute elsewhere, and we, you know, we can't even tap those resources.
We, we know from the Career Center that honestly, the people coming out of the field, um, have, having been there and done that can bring a whole different level of expertise on what's current best practice, so and that's not to say that a classically trained CTE teacher can't nail all those areas, but if you bring a, an electrician in or a plumber in, or a manufacturer in that's been there and done that, it's, it's a little different uh, view on um, what they bring, you know, the expertise that they bring in those areas.
Uh, Jeff, um, Stacy kinda mentioned this about making it a little more diverse with the students, when you were talking about adding this as a goal. Uh, can we also add that, as far as our instructors too? I know that we were looking at the promo for the Career Center, and I was like, wow, we need some instructors that are women and people of color, so that, I was gonna say, can we just add that as a goal also, please?
It is absolutely a goal, I mean, actually, um, one, one of the goals of our K twelve teacher prep program is to create our own diverse workforce, and um, one of our goals, as we know, uh, teachers of, of different ethnicities and diversity are essential, because, you know, you, that is an absolute goal. Um, we ran, you know, it's, sometimes it's tough, difficult, because of the fact that, again, we do have to sometimes align, I mean, we do have to align the um, credentials and such, I know, like, for example, we had, when Doreen Mingle left, and we were filling that position, I went to Doreen and Aish, and I said, okay, you need to help me out here, because I would really like to hire um, an African-American for this position, not that I would limit it, but I go, you know, I want somebody in this candidate pool to pull, and they, we, we just, they, they couldn't even pull a name out to help me on that with the requirements that we needed to meet, so.
I'm a believer of put it in the air. Doesn't make it happen, so just put it in the air.
Absolutely, so our goal, our goal is absolute diversity of our students and diversity of our staff all the way.
You know, I, I tell you, interesting, I don't, not sure this group is still running or not, you know, for a, for a few years there, the Society of Women Engineers, where I know they were engaged at Hoover, and Orange and Lou Henry in working with getting uh, young, you know, girls interested in STEM careers. And it might be a thing where, you know, trying to tap some more, there are different Society of Engineers and different technical groups out there, you know, to help, you know, try to, to increase that, you know, diversity in those programs. But I think you gotta, I think, you know, like we're saying, I think we gotta get it before they get to high school, I think high school is kinda too late, you don't kinda get them in I think, the middle school timeframe, you may not have that same opportunity to get them pushed into those.
Jesse.
I would agree.
My first Lego League team that I did it, um, that I coached at Kingsley was all girls, third grade girls. So yes, those are, that's how you have to do it, you have to start them.
Actually, actually, I think it was either the west or the east graduation, I forget which one, Aster, you and I talked about this, this club that's out there for African-American males in engineering, I believe it was, and
Yeah.
Um, trying to, how can we connect that dot and make that happen, and, and get that into the high schools at least, so, I mean, I've had multiple conversations working on that, I know Aster and I have talked about that, and.
And I believe I forwarded some of the information to Joy Briscoe as well.
Correct.
Um, uh, Junior NASB program, I mean, I know there's a lot of individuals from John Deere that are involved in that program as well, and I actually was um, presented the information from a Waterloo Schools former student, who's a sophomore, junior this year at Iowa State University, and he wanted to implement it, he had been discussing it with me um, previous occasions, um, and he finally got the information to me um, and said that he wanted to help implement it in the Waterloo schools, um, and he referenced uh, the IJAG program was one of the things that helped him get to the point where he is, so he's interned with John Deere the last three years, I believe. Um, so it was a actual Waterloo, uh, former Waterloo School student that um, brought that information to me, um, and I've heard of the program, uh, and I know quite a few engineers that are in the program that deal with it at, at John Deere, so uh, all the information he gave me was, it was awesome program, and I forwarded that to Jeff, I believe, and Joy Briscoe too.
Yep, and I, I've actually talked to two of our contacts, John Deere's been an amazing partner, by the way, um, whether it's Girls in STEM, or uh, the group that we've talked about there, um, I've been in contact with two people out there saying, can we you know, we've talked about this a lot, now it's time to like, take action. Um, part of the problem right now is per se, just contact with the students, of being able to get in the building with everything going on here. But we do have some real solid plans in regards to, once things open up, of really, our focus is recruitment in general, in the career and technical education, but then really recruitment tied to the Perkins Grant, which we have to, to do, which is non-traditional students and um, into fields uh, such as engineering or whatever, uh, you know, that's, that's the goal, that's one of our three major goals.
Well, and, and it really has to start at this level, cause I mean, companies are looking for more diverse, you know, diversity, but we have to provide the students, you know, have them ready to get in those fields, so at the same time, I mean, our, you know, our, the mission starts at, you know, even at younger ages, how to, you know, you know, if, if it's getting more in STEM, whatever, is how you get kid, different, you know, kids across the board interested in.
Correct, if we get them like in eleventh or twelfth grade, you know, that's, puts us behind, we really need to get out front of it. We really need to get out front of it earlier and connect them and engage them. So like, we have like our fifth grade tours and stuff, eighth grade tours and taking them and actually embedding them, embedding students into programs for a day or two, their top three choices and saying, this is what you're going to do. You're going to be embedded into the program. You're going to be actually part of the class, being taught by the students and hopefully getting them excited about doing the different things. And they get to actually, it wouldn't be into a program, it'd be into a, a larger area. So it'd be the trades or into the human services, into a service area instead of a field or program.
In the summer camp you did.
I'm going to let us, can we, I'm going to let Dr. Lindeman, can you put a pin in that for just a second?
I just was going to say that when you're talking about the recruiting, the piece that we need to add, that doesn't have to do with high school, but the two things that got canceled this summer. One of them was the, the WCC camp. And then the other one was the engineering camp for sponsored by, sponsored and paid for by Waterloo, by John Deere. And it was specific to the NASB initiatives. And so it, we would, we had, we met with them. I personally went along with Angelie, we went multiple times. Kingsley, you were there one time too. We, and it was supposed to be for 100 students of color this summer for, and so that, that got canceled, but that is still funded, that will go forward as soon as we can get kids back. So I just didn't want to miss that really great opportunity.
No, you, you covered mine too. I'll come mention that the camp was, two years ago was good, so.
I just wanted to make sure we got it.
And Jeff, with all the, you know, volunteer, voluntary, voluntary retirements at Deere right now, you know, hit them up, get people to, you know.
Well, absolutely.
Talk to these people, tell them.
We actually, honestly, we do have a lot of Deere workers and other people that come to us and say, anytime you need somebody to come in and talk about what I'm doing to excite kids. Really, I think the key is, you know, so if we're talking students that are African-American in engineering, what we really need is African-American engineers that have been there, done that. If we're talking about females that are in plumbing, we need females that have been plumbers to come out and talk about what a great career this is. Ironically, one of our best students in the plumbing, actually, she probably is the best student, is a female. And she is going to walk out of there with apprentice hours and she's going to nail it. She actually was out working on the LOL, not working, but they did a mock work at the LOL site and the, the plumbing company, I forget who it is, but I know Larson, I talked to Steve from Larson and he was like, oh my gosh, she, she knew as much as you needed to know to be doing what we were doing. And, you know, it was pretty amazing. So we, I mean, again, but again, that's where we, once we're able to get out and recruit, we need to do that. We will be doing that.
All right, Jeff and Sharice, I'm sorry, we got really, really off of the program of studies a little bit, but, but I think we're good.
Can I say one more thing though?
You may.
This young lady right here, because she's younger than me, I want you to know, she deserves a ton of credit because we have not filled Debbie Lee's position or the Director of, it's second, it's Curriculum Director, what is the name, the official title?
Director of Secondary.
Secondary Curriculum Coordinator. Honestly, the person that grabbed the bull by the horns and drove this bus was Sharice. And if we didn't have our stuff done, she would be down in my office, she'd be calling. And that was for everybody on this. And Sharice did an amazing job of getting this together. And I just wanted to make sure she got her credit and do, she did a great job of getting this through to this point tonight.
Absolutely. And we really appreciate your, both of you and, and Dr. Mulholland, your time last week to talk through this with us and then obviously tonight. So, and Sharice, kudos to you. Thank you for getting it done.
And I did have one question. First time I've talked tonight. But I think it's more for Sharice than you, Jeff, sorry.
Perfect.
But just if you could explain the difference and, and what about our career interest academies and how kids are placed in that and that that's, how that functions?
As far as at the high schools?
Yes.
Well, I don't have a lot of background. I talked with both administrators on, is that something we're going to keep looking ahead? I would highly recommend that the incoming secondary curriculum coordinator would sit down with the high schools and say, do we need to look at this differently? Right now, it's really set up based on some information on what kids could possibly be interested in. You know, we do the four-year plan. Middle school counselors talk with students about possible interests. It's very light, it's very loose. I would recommend that we start aligning it to things that are happening at the Career Center and other opportunities at the high school as far as building that pathway. West High uses those academies a lot so that they can somewhat give students an interest pathway, but also to coordinate groups for a lot of their other programs that they have. And they also have counselors who are more, I would say, familiar with some of the field, those field occupations and some of the courses that would go along with those different academies, working with that cluster of kids. But we've really evolved over the years. The last two years does not look like when this was first established. So I would say moving ahead, that's definitely something that the secondary curriculum coordinator in the high schools and the board need to sit down and say, hey, how are we aligning pathways now? What are we looking at that's different or more improved from what we've been doing in the past?
And we really had those before the WCC came in place, because that goes way back to Mary Meyer forever ago. And so since that time, since we brought in the WCC and in the work that I'm doing with the counselors, you're going to see some changes coming. And so, because that was before we had the hands-on opportunities. Oh, we had the shop classes and we had some courses at East, West and Expo, but now we've taken that to a whole new level. So you're going to see a better articulation and a better pipeline all the way back into the elementary where we start working on careers and helping them frame up even to the, we're looking at a software, like a tracking so that we can start talking to kids and say, gosh, Shanley, you're a fourth grader now, what are you interested in? And then each time the questions get a little more specific to when they get into middle school and we're tracking that electronically so that when opportunities come up, we can say, oh gosh, which kids had an interest in this? And send them specifically an email, here's an opportunity. We can still put it out for all, but we can target some kids and say, hey, you have shown that this is what you want to do. We don't want you to miss this info, this information. So that will help a lot.
And that's why we kept it in, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, and a lot of it is just for keeping kids in a smaller community, correct? I mean, I had a friend's son come home and say, the mom didn't have any idea why they were put in this academy. And so just, yeah, so just how that would be for a kid that, you know, isn't gregarious and knows what they're in and, and their parents aren't that involved.
Right. And, and I think that's probably something that even at the high schools, they can let you know why they're in this particular academy. That might help with the conversation. I wanted to show you, we jazzed up page 19 for you. We took your recommendations, cleaned stuff up. We have to give credit to Todd Kern on that one. You know, you go with the people who have the strengths for sure. And then that one you asked about with the ACT for the NCAA, it's a combination of all four. Did you see I added that? Well, I learned too. So this isn't just me. I just want you to know, we had a new Secretary of Ed Services who really jumped in with, with both feet to help out when, with Verna, you know, the change. And the person who really sort of mapped all this out for us. So I want to say thank you to Irene Roney and all the departments that worked together. So it wasn't just one person.
I have one more, Sharice. I'm so sorry.
Then I'm calling the questions. So this is the last one, I swear.
I saw the ELP is still in the high school curriculum.
Yes.
However, at the middle school, when my child was going through and I asked several times, because I loved it. You know, when you talked about autonomous learning, that's where I learned sign language. I taught, you know, my four years in ELP with Mr. Young Kent, that was what I did.
Yep.
So, but my child and I were told, no, she should be just taking the advanced classes. That's all it is. There is no ELP in high school.
Well, here's what it is and what it isn't. We now have so many college and advanced options. ELP Expanded Learning Program in elementary and middle school is there because we don't have as many choices to extend students to really meet those rigorous outcomes. We have over 100 college options and various pathways. Now, being with the same-like cohort, we do still have ELP seminar over at East High School. And one of the things that, that Matt Tracy, who's our ELP teacher at East High, one of the things that he does is he's really building community of writing. And we found that a lot of the students are selecting courses coming from West High Theater School to have some more writing. And so they're taking those advanced English courses that infuse a lot more critical thinking and writing. And it sort of weeded out as an elective option. Over time, we looked at it. Now, if we, if we get, you know, an interest in it, we're still meeting their needs by offering so many rigorous pathways.
Right.
And it really became, Stacy, we had maybe two kids that wanted to take the ELP elective when they could take all these new electives at the Career Center or they could take all these new pre-IB AP or IB or, or Hawkeye classes at the high school. It just became, over time, their needs were met through all those other options.
Yeah.
And the staffing for two or three kids.
Right. I was just, it, it's a nice, safe place for kids who are like 2E, you know? It ju, it just is. And, but if it's not something that's being utilized, then.
We, well, we actually, my ELP teacher at the high school at West High, that's what we created. Instead of having ELP per se, because kids were selecting all these other advanced courses and, and early on college courses, we had some kids taking U and I classes in, in ninth grade. So there were all kinds of ways to be able to receive those, those rigorous experiences. For the social emotional part, for twice exceptionality, those courses became 2E seminars. So my 2E teacher now teaches 2E seminar, which is at both East and West High School. So any student who's flagged as twice exceptional, they're put into that seminar where they work with Emily Isomann, who has a gifted ed background. And then she helps during that time to work with students based on their strengths and they're with a small cohort. That's what we absorbed when we removed the ELP course itself.
That sounds great. Thank you so much. That's it.
Thank you, Sharice. Thank you.
Did you approve it? I don't know.
No, I'm, I'm trying. If you guys would get away from the microphone, step back, go away. Okay. All right. So everybody now, all those in favor of approving the 2021, 2020, 22 high school program of studies, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thanks again. We appreciate it. That takes us then to exhibit aye. And this is the bond issuance. And bear with me, this is going to take just a minute for me to get this all on the table. So the recommended motion is that the Board approves the resolution directing the sale of school infrastructure sales, service and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2020 as presented. The resolution appointing UM Bank NA of West Des Moines, Iowa to serve as a trustee, approving the trust indenture and authorizing the execution of same. The form of tax exemption certificate be placed on file and approved. The form of continuing disclosure certificate be placed on file and approved. And the resolution authorizing and providing for the terms of issuance and securing the payment of 22,600,000 School Infrastructure Sales, Service and Use Tax Revenue Bonds, Series 2020 of the Waterloo Community School District, State of Iowa, under the provisions of Chapter 423E and 423F of the Code of Iowa and providing for a method of payment of said bonds. Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Stacy. And discussion, we have Michael Coughlin here on the line this evening. So Michael, I can turn it over to you if you have further information to provide to the Board.
I don't have a lot of further information. I think just in summary, this is all the, all the legal work that has to follow the awarding of the bid to place the bond, to file all the legal paperwork of disclosure. It is, the UMB Bank serves as a trustee in the fact that they organize our payments every month. So we're paying money into a sinking fund in their bank. So we have the money there when the payments are due. So it's just a lot of legal organization of, and security of the bonds that we are following all the procedures and everybody is on board with all of their legal requirements that have to happen in a sizable bond issue like this. So this is all of Beth Grob's work from Ailer's. And we just have to supply you with the many, many pages of background that go with it just so you're fully aware of what's being addressed. But it is a very, it's just a, a simple explanation of all the legal work that has to go along with finalizing the issuance of the bond.
And all four of the resolutions that followed. All right. Well, this requires a roll call vote from the Board. So I will start down here with India. All those in favor then of approving the issuance of the School Infrastructure Sales Series and Use Tax Revenue Bonds?
Yes.
Yes? Thank you. And Jesse?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes. And I just wanted to say that UMB is just like a whole entity.
Okay. Thank you. And Aster?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
And Shanley is yes. Motion carried. Thank you very much. All right. Then this takes us to the LEA Certified Annual Report. And, hang on just a second, I got to get to the recommended motion here. Is that the Board of Education place on file the Certified Annual Report, the Special Education Supplement and the Annual Transportation Report as required by Iowa Department of Education.
Some move.
Thank you, Jesse. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, India. Appreciate it. And discussion. Michael, do you have anything to add to this? Again, this is, I'm guessing this is some housekeeping, just placing our, our car and the other things on, by the department, by the Department of Ed, just posting them, correct?
It is. We have a deadline. It's normally September 15th. That has been that date forever. Like this year, because of the programming challenge with the new transportation report that's been out, they moved it back to September 25th, was, was the date that you'll keep posted to be certified by.
Okay.
And the reason that it held pulls it up is that the Certified Annual Report, the Special Ed Supplement and the Transportation Report all have to be submitted together because they are all interdependent on each other. So you can't finish one and send it in and then finish another one and change something. So they are all tied together electronically and on our accounting. So that's why you're seeing that there's three reports under one box.
But the funding is.
That makes sense. But the funding for those is separate, correct? Separate, separate streams.
Well, they're all, no, they're all interdependent on, so the Transportation Report and the Special Ed Report are approved of or inside of the Annual Report. But they're both highly public subjects of transportation and taking care of the Special Ed population that we have special reports just to report those publicly. That they're not just buried inside of the, of the Certified Annual Report. They are supplements to the Certified Annual Report. It's the same money being reported in different, in different areas.
Does that answer your question, India?
It does.
Okay.
I'm just thinking outside the box here. If we ever thought about having our own bus, buses, does this certification change? Because when, yes, that's it. You know, I know that we kind of thought about if we ever wanted to just have our own busing system versus.
Michael, did you hear that?
How does that, how would this change that?
How would that affect it if we didn't, if we didn't contract for our bus services and we had, did our bus services in-house? Would that change the way that this is presented still in the car, in the Certified Annual Report, sorry?
There'd be a few different entries in the, in the costing where we would be reporting salaries and benefits and supplies and so on, where right now it gets just the purchase service to Durham. But, but in the end, it all measures in the same way.
So and transportation would still be pulled out separately?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. But we'd have a lot more depreciation of assets doing it, you know, in the report.
Thank you. Thank you.
Michael, are there any items that are uncertain at this point? Has everything been processed in a timely manner or is there, you know?
Everything met deadlines, it's been through the, the initial field work and the final field work of the. and the final field work of the audit, and, uh, has passed all of the requirements of, of their questions and what we are required to send to the state. Um, so yes, we have finalized everything and everything, um, is being presented in these reports as our final numbers.
So none of us will go to jail?
Did you hear him?
No, I didn't hear that at all.
He just said, "So none of us will go to jail."
He heard it.
Thank you, Michael.
We're trusting Michael.
No one's going to jail, so, alright. While all those in favor then of approving the LEA Certified Annual Reports, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to Item K, and this is the Special Education 2020 Modified Allowable Growth Request. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation to approve the request to the School Budget Review Committee for allowable growth and supplemental aid payment for the negative special education balance of six hundred seventy-seven thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety cents for the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Some move.
Second.
Thanks. Aster moved, and Jesse seconded. End discussion. Again, Michael, um, I can turn this over to you for a little more explanation.
Well, this, the question, a good question I have is, um, the, I guess, very drastic decrease in the amount of modified allowable growth for the negative balance. We're only asking for six hundred seventy-seven thousand versus eighteen nineteen was one hundred and forty-three million.
Yeah, that's correct. Um, that was the request amount to the state from all the districts across the state. And, um, I will send you a summary of the, of the districts from nineteen, a year ago, and that's what's posted. Um, and just by looking, by adding up the report, about the top twenty-five requests, you look at half of the hundred and forty million. So there are some very sizable numbers in some of the bigger districts, and there are some very sizable numbers for the size of some smaller districts. There are forty-five districts higher than we are in nineteen as a deficit. So, um, yeah, it runs from last year, the highest amount that was, was awarded was over nine million dollars. It dropped quickly to five and four and three, but after that, there was a lot of districts that had, um, half a million to a million dollars of overage. And we are sitting as one of the biggest districts in the state, and we are down forty-six positions, um, from that list. As I was gathering information for two thousand twenty for a comparison, um, that nine million dollar deficit increased in that district. Um, and there was similar, I got samples from about half a dozen or eight districts. I mean, all of them stayed pretty similar to what the year before, and most went higher. So as we sat in the six hundred thousand figure, um, I had one of the, uh, people that I polled to get the information, uh, they gave me their information and their amount doubled from the year before. And the question to us, to the district was, "I want to know your secret. I don't know how you function and operate and control, uh, the special ed budget like you have, but I would like to know how you do it." So it is, uh, it is something that is, um, a hard thing to maintain. Ivan has, does a great job with, um, the budget issues. Um, but we are always looking at doing, uh, it's not just about the money, it's about the services. So we find to blend those two together. We have the best service for the best efficiency. But that's a continual study, as, uh, you've well talked about many times, of the, uh, special needs of, of these kids, and that's not, um, set aside. But we've been able to maintain a low, uh, budget deficit for our size, but we will continue to work hard on that.
No, I, that's, thank you. It's an awesome, thank you, Ivan, too. That's awesome. But as far as like numbers of kids, I know sometimes they said, you know, the levels that we get funding for and, and, um, that didn't just decrease drastically at all, that played pretty constant.
Ivan's coming to the microphone.
Yeah, stay up. I have one, too, after that.
Hello, yeah, I can address that. Uh, it looks like two years ago, um, was when we had the increase of a hundred students, um, that were weighted primarily Level Two and Level Three. And then from last year to this year, that number's been pretty steady.
Good.
Awesome. Good work.
Stacy, you had a question?
Yeah, it's not really the money part, but it, um, you know, the, during the pandemic closing, the district was required to continue to pay staff, um, and pay staff costs, tuition, out students, and the River Hills Consortium staff. And I'm, I guess what I'm just asking now is how, how are things with our River Hills kids now? Like, what, what is going on? It, do we have kids in the buildings? Like, how, how is that functioning?
Yep, they're operating a hybrid schedule right now, is my understanding. So they've got kids in the building Monday, Tuesday. Wednesday, they have a day off, and then they have a different group in on Thursday, Friday.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah.
And approximately, how many students are at River Hills?
Uh, I wanted to say thirty-three, uh. Yeah, I'll get the exact number.
Those are ours, because there is, there are.
Right.
I, there's close, what, twenty-seven some districts? It's a lot.
Yep.
That feed there. So it's thirty-three of our students, but.
Yeah, most districts have one kid there.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe two students, maybe five, but, yeah.
We, we.
Which, we had, we've had anywhere from thirty-five to, or thirty-three to forty some. I mean, it just depends, but.
Right.
We are.
Yep.
We are the largest.
We are the biggest, yep.
Yep.
And we're charged a pro ratio based on number of students, of total students. So they take their operating cost divided by student and charges. Charge every district on a per student basis, is that how it works?
Yep.
And I believe Cedar Falls is the, they are the ones that, they're the fiscal agent.
Yeah.
At least they were. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Michael.
Have you been there, district?
Right. Thank you, Ivan.
Oh.
And good job. Yes. Alright, um, then all those in favor of accepting the recommendation to the SBRC for allowable growth and supplemental aid for the special ed balance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to Item L, which is the LEP allowable costs. And that recommended motion is, the Board of Education approves submission of the request to the SBRC for one million, eight hundred twenty thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars in modified allowable growth to provide one hundred percent spending authority for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty actual LEP program costs. And that this increased allowable growth will be funded by twenty twenty-one, twenty-two cash reserve levies.
Some move.
Thank you, Jesse.
Second.
Second, Sue, and discussion.
One thing that I failed to mention with the approval, approval of the SBRC request, again, I, um, mentioned this before in other requests of this type, that it, it gives us the authority of that overage, but the decision of whether we back that with cash reserve is a decision that the board will make when property taxes are approved next March and April. So it's not a guarantee that it will be, uh, part of property tax, but it does give us the opportunity to do that, and that decision will be made at a later date.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you for that clarification, Michael. Can't run the microphone and do this and that.
Do, do we have people that, is Amy White here? Is that?
She is.
Yeah, um.
Amy, would you mind coming forward, please? Thank you.
And my colleagues.
Come on in. She's our ELL and LEP, and, and you guys do what you need to do for your social distancing. Amy, you can start and however you want.
Good evening.
Thanks.
My name is Amy White. Hopefully you can hear me okay.
Yes.
And I am the English Language Development Facilitator for the Waterloo Schools.
My name's Monica Mariano, the Board Leader of the English Language Project and English Language Development Program.
I just kind of want to hear in general how you guys feel things are going right now.
And you have to make sure you're talking to the microphone or the.
You two are gonna have to either.
One or the other.
You gotta get closer to that microphone.
Just trade off when you're ready to speak.
Yep, you can just back up and, however you want to do it. Thank you. And make sure the green light's on.
It is.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, uh, we are certainly not happy about, uh, an amount that we are overspending. Um, this is, um, part of, um, shift in our programmatic, um, ideology that happened a few years ago. Um, and the reason why we shifted is because we wanted to serve our ELL population differently. So when that shift happened, our philosophy turned from a pull-out program that was not effective and is not effective as a strategy, to a, um, co-teaching model, to a building capacity in the buildings, so that they are not dependent on an ELD specialist, to focus on cross-curricular academic vocabulary and literacy in general, and that required more staffing. This is how we staffed, using a ratio of one, two, forty, looking at other models in the state, um, that were similar in demographics. Um, so performance-wise and program-wise, looking at the data, um, we fare better than other districts whose ratio is higher than our, um, teacher-student ratio. Um, our perspective as far as the evaluation of the program and as far as, uh, student performance is concerned, based on the, um, LPA twenty-one, which is our, uh, specific, um, uh, test with which we measure English language development, um, is that it is not enough to see high scores and progress and growth on that test. But we want to see those scores reflected and that progress and growth on content areas, which is what we are seeing. When we look at our subgroup of VLLs and their, um, performance on the ISAS, they are on, um, above or on state, um, average. Amy, did you want to add?
Okay, now my question is, you're saying, um, the pull-out model was not effective. How do you determine that effectiveness? And then what numbers are you going by since we didn't really have testing last spring?
Well, fortunately, I'm gonna start with that. We were able to test hundred percent last year. So we completed our, um, annual assessment, so we are able to, um, look at actually a nice increase in scores on, um, English language development test. Um, and so with that being said, um, the ratio is not determined necessarily by the pull-out program, but, but the shift that I mentioned before, and that involves putting our staff in co-teaching environments, to where they could not only model strategies, effective strategies. So when you asked me about how did we determine what's effective and what is not, it's not just the scores, it's also research-based strategies that we are constantly trying to stay on top of, uh, by educating ourselves, educating our staff, and educating, um, also the general education and content area teachers. Via professional development modeling that I mentioned, via co-teaching, and also including, um, conversation in PLCs that include this subgroup, uh, addressing the needs, uh, specific to ELLs. Because what we know about ELLs is that the strategies that serve support, performance, and academic progress for ELLs are also good for all of the students. The only exception is that the ELLs cannot live without, cannot learn without those strategies. I'm not sure if I answered your questions.
I, I guess, so we're, we're asking for more money to pay for additional staff. When did we do the shift you're talking about?
So we do have some creative ideas, because we do not want to constantly ask for extra money to, uh, move forward the program that we find effective in the formula that is functioning right now. And we do want to discuss that and present some plans to Dr. Mohorn and Dr. Lindemann, and see if those are feasible, because we don't want to continue in that manner. Um, but again, as far as the, um, programmatic aspect and the way we are serving the students, we are seeing good data that supports, um, the good work that our staff is doing.
And, and then in correlation to that, is our ELL staff, our ELL student population higher?
We were fairly steady. Uh, but what I want to say about a time when, for example, um, West High School did not see any progress, any exited student, for three years in a row. And we did see steady increase, starting way to seventeen, to eighteen, to nineteen, when we staffed appropriately and we actually implementing a new program to serve the newcomers. We have seen trends of newcomers in our district, three or four years in a row. Um, newcomers who come in the middle of the school year, for whom we are not really prepared. Part of that problem is the fact that the newcomers were also SLIF, meaning, uh, students who interrupted, um, formal education. So because of that reason, having two teachers in a building with a hundred and some students, some of whom were these students, who didn't know the language and did not have the background, the academic content either, we needed to implement a program that worked. And, uh, we are happy with the results we are seeing right now with our newcomers.
And I just want to.
I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna, just a quick background on some of that timing. Um, Dr. Lindemann reminded me of what our state does versus nationally in terms of getting to proficiency and the amount of funding and the weighting of that. And that Iowa only does, you know, twenty-two percent for five years. It only used to be three. So we really are working to increase that supplemental funding to go, because we know that it takes more than five years in order to do that.
I can give you some data. So students acquire social language in two years without any, almost without any instruction. It's the playground language that they acquire.
Yep.
It takes five to seven years to acquire academic language, and that doesn't mean words. It means the language of text box.
Exactly.
To perform. Um, so that is one aspect that we also looked at. How long does it take? Now, we do want to address that, uh, that aspect as well.
Sure.
By, um, changing the approach to teaching the long-term ELLs, because we have those ELLs and we know we are not getting funding for those ELLs. So they need to be served, we need the staffing, so we need to do something about it. So that has been on our radar last year, but, uh, with everything happening, we were kind of.
Exactly.
Cut in the middle of, uh, that initiative.
Yeah. Stacy, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
That was just part of my question was, um, when you're mainstreaming with, uh, co, co-teachers, are you seeing growth from the social interaction that students are having? Cause there's, you're saying that there's English speaking and, okay. So you're seeing, are you seeing a different growth from having the two together? Than you would if, if they were not integrated?
Integrated.
Yeah.
Uh, we definitely do, because, uh, acculturation is part of the process of learning a second language. So the less threatening the environment, the, uh, more opportunities to interact with native speakers, the more opportunities to feel that they are welcomed.
Yeah, that's, are they, this is a hard thing to say, but do you see more like friendships developing?
We do.
Good.
We do. And what we see and we are happy, of course, right now in pockets. This is not a process that it started today and it ends tomorrow. We are seeing, uh, good collaboration, good practices, um, shared between the ELD specialists and content area teachers. Not everywhere, not, you know, in all of the places, but that's the work that we are doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What do the numbers look like for graduation?
What do the numbers look like for graduation?
We are, I know we are, we looked at the graduation rates, the four-year and five-year rate. We are by one point lower than the state average. And so, we are hoping to increase that too.
Okay, so, got something to work on, but.
Well, it is something to work on, and I wanted to add something to that because these are students who are in high school. And in high school, what matters is when have you started to be exposed to learning the second language? Because there is a plateau as well. It's, it's an increased ability of learning when you are ten, twelve, and that decreases with age and stops at seventeen. That doesn't mean you're not able to learn it, it's just taking longer. So, it is amazing that with a newcomer program, we are able to be that close to the state average.
Definitely.
And I just was wondering, what is the appropriate term? I hear LEP, ELL, ESL, you know, what is the word that we use now?
So, we are using English Language Learner because it's a more generic term. When we refer to the English language-specific instruction, we prefer to use English Language Development because there is an aspect of instructing second language learners that has to do with pressing on grammar and aspects of grammar and syntax. And so, that is more developing that ability of utilizing the language appropriately.
Appreciate that because you hear things interchangeably and, so, just what is the term? Thank you.
You will, you will see LEP because that's in the federal language and that's limited English proficient.
Yeah, that's what's on our.
Yeah, that's on our agenda.
So, that's what gave me the question because I'm like, okay, LEP, ELL, ESL.
Right. We stay away from a deficit language because they are not limited in any way. They are learners.
Exactly. Yeah. That makes sense. Thank you both for coming forward, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, then, all those in favor of the request to the SBRC Committee for the allowable growth and the supplemental aid for the negative special, oh, wait, that's not the right, that's not the right one. There you go, hang on. I want to make sure I got it right, I don't have it pulled up. For the SBRC request for the hundred percent spending authority for the actual LEP program cost, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carry. So, that concludes our action items for tonight. And I would, at this point, turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for her superintendent's report.
Thank you. So, let's see, I've got just a, just a few things. I was gonna say handful, and then I make you nervous if I have a handful. So, first of all, I'm gonna start with a celebration. We got word, and I think it actually came today, and Tara already did a really good job of getting it out, that our finance office received a certificate of achievement and excellence for financial reporting. And so, I just wanted to bring that to the public's attention. I think a press release went out today. I think we got it at two o'clock, and Tara had a press release out shortly thereafter. So, Waterloo Schools consistently earns this level of achievement. And I had asked the question earlier because I knew it seemed like it was, yeah, it was twenty-three years that they have received this level of excellence in reporting. And so, I just wanted to make note of that. So, congratulations that the audit and all of that work and the CAR and all, it is, it is a lot of work. And this year, I think, Michael will tell you, that it was even harder because they had to do it virtually and the auditors couldn't be on-site, and so, everything had to be electronic. So, it was, it was quite tough. So, congratulations, Michael, and your group. Second thing, I just, we are working through our strategic plan, and we've had a very active strategic plan for a number of years. And we have, you know, we're still working under the PACE. We have made a few modifications for this year because we've had a couple of things that obviously weren't in our plan that have taken front seat. And so, I just wanted to share, one of the areas that we are working on is an area that we, we call it "learning from what we're doing right now." And so, there is a section, we label it A3. And it's, it's a goal where we are actually learning and studying what's happening before our very eyes. And we're using that to glean whatever is working best right now that we'll take into next year. And so, for example, we actually had a meeting today and we were talking about, you know, we are noticing a significant decrease in behavior referrals, a significant decrease. And so, the question was, why? You know, what's different and what could we learn from what's going on? So, I just, I mentioned that because there's, 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 it's just a very, very different year. And so, we are looking at that, we're gonna try to glean everything that we can. We're, we actually have, Dr. Mohorn is, is leading that particular strategic plan in collaboration with Matt O'Brien because Matt from the tech side, and he actually has a real interesting data mind. And so, we started looking at, you know, what data should we be grabbing right now? What we don't want to have happen is we don't want to get to June and then say, you know, I wonder why that's happening. And we could have collected data all along the way. So, we're trying to do a really good job of looking at that and tracking that. And so, that would take me to my third topic, which I had promised I was gonna talk about, virtual. So, you know, I really appreciated the letters tonight. I had talked with the vast majority of the people who shared a letter. There were a couple I didn't know. But, you know, the, the parts that they had shared were things that we were very aware of. And so, a couple of the people in there were, they're related. And so, I had visited with both of them to talk a little bit about what was going on. So, and for the board, I had shared with you in the weekly update some of the information. So, let me just make a couple of comments. So, first of all, we are, we are definitely evaluating what's going on right now. I would say every day we have a conversation about virtual. We're getting feedback from parents, from students. I actually, over the weekend, ended up spending about thirty minutes talking with a student, talked with their dad first, and then ended up talking with a student just to better glean the information, talking with teachers, feedback from other districts. I know Stephanie spent quite a bit of time talking with the UNs. How are you doing it? What's going on? What's going well? What's not going well? Talking with other districts locally even. So, definitely trying to get, get feedback on that. I think we actually put out a survey last week to, even though we had gotten a lot of anecdotal information and a lot of questions from people, we just kind of wanted to glean some information from our greater, the greater set of virtual parents. And so, you know, it was generally positive, definitely some work ahead. But I would say it was, it was actually quite significantly positive, lots of good feedback. Approximately, not quite, but, you know, approaching eighty percent of parents were satisfied with the virtual experience, virtual program experience, which I actually think is pretty amazing given the scenario. But, there's, you know, there's a lot of work. We had about twenty percent, a little over twenty percent of parents who are not satisfied with the virtual instruction. And so, you know, we, we definitely know that we have some work to do on that. So, and even the people, I said this to you earlier, I think even the people that said we are generally satisfied with it, but here's a suggestion that would make it better. So, we have a, we have a team of individuals that is working very hard on this. It has been very tough because we have a lot of changing back and forth. I think the summer, we had really intended that when people signed up for it, that they would stick and stay until November for elementary and then semester for the middle school and high school. And we ended up really offering a lot more changes than that. And so, we've had hundreds and hundreds, and we've got another group of probably about two hundred that we're getting ready to change very shortly. And so, because, you know, either in-person is not working or virtually isn't working for them. And so, we're really trying to make those changes. But Kingsley will tell you that there are some significant staffing issues that happen with that because it would be, it would be easy if there were five people in one building that wanted to come back to in-person and five people from in-person who wanted to go to virtual, but it never works that way. And even if it's five people from one building, it might be five kindergartners going one way and five fifth graders going the other. So, it has, you know, but that, that's our job. So, we're definitely working on that. But, and the one part that's a little hard on, even the surveys, when we actually have a little spreadsheet that we look at, you know, everything that's going well, and we're doing some thematic coding to look at that. And there are many places where it's a predominant conversation or comment that, you know, this is going really, really well, and then it's, this is not going really, really well. So, we're really trying to dig in, you know, one, one of the comments that we saw over and over and over is Edgenuity is extremely engaging. And then, we saw Edgenuity is not engaging at all. And so, we're really trying to sort through that and follow up with some people. There were a lot of parents who, we, we gave an optional thing at the end that said, you know, if you have questions or you would like a phone call, please put your name and your number. So, we're in the process of divvying out those names so that we can just call people and have conversations. We think the conversations are always, already better. And a lot of the parents that were on there asked for a phone call I had already talked with or Stephanie's team had already talked to, but, but, you know, we'll call them again. So, again, feedback was generally positive, but we definitely have some work there. Let's see, two more things. You know, I wanted, I wanted to address the, the question. I think one of the things that, the comments that I hear, the in-person being preferred. And so, I just wanted to kind of maybe give a little bit of context around that particular statement. I think anywhere in the nation, anywhere, actually in Iowa, I think in every single Return to Learn Plan, you will see a statement that says in-person is the preferred method. And I think we stand behind that and for two reasons. So, in-person is the preferred method because it's probably what's best for most, not all. But, the other big piece is, it's the, it's the preferred method because that's really what schools were ready for. You know, we weren't ready to scale up for this virtual, and we did the best we can. I, I've shared that, you know, a lot of times when you do a really big changeover, they will say, if you look at implementation studies or implementation data and research, they will usually say that most initiatives take two years and some take three to five. And then, there are certain ones that are second-order change that even take five to seven. But, I don't think that's necessarily, well, maybe that's what we're talking here. But, so, you know, I don't think that, you know, I don't think that schools in general were ready to go a hundred percent virtual. We hear that from districts that, across the nation, that haven't started, that they're, they're struggling. I mean, they're really struggling, and I think most every district is struggling to serve the virtual students at the same level that you do in-person. And so, that's where we have to get better because in no way is, is that statement intended to be dismissive because our, our virtual students are our students. They're just choosing to, to get their, their education in a different way, which they have that choice. And so, for some families, you know, that's, that, maybe they chose it because that, they just thought that was better or, you know, there might, there could be some medical reasons why. And so, whatever the reason, it's our job to scale up. And I do think, you know, in three to five years, I think districts are gonna look different. And I think they're gonna have a lot of, a lot of options. And I think at that time, it's possible where you say, you know, now, either one, you know, we, we, we can scale up. School districts can scale up for either one of those. And so, in no way, shape, or form is that intended to inhibit our improvement efforts because we just can't because they're our kids. And so, anyway, that, I know that in working with Edgenuity, Edgenuity was a really, it's been a proven program, especially for the middle school and high school on. It's, you know, it's been around for a long time, as have some of the others. And so, I think what happened for school districts where we, we scaled up very quickly, I think Edgenuity had to do the same thing at their elementary level. They had some programming, but they certainly didn't have enough and nor were they prepared for a global pandemic. And so, I've been kind of, I had applied to, there's a Facebook page where some of our parents are, parents of virtual students or students who are doing virtual have been putting, they've been posting some, like screenshots of questions that are really not good. And so, I've been looking at those and really, and we've been sending those on to Edgenuity instantly and to the point where we even passed along the, the help desk number to our families and said, if you see one, put it out there because just like on standardized testing, whether it's Smarter Balance or the ISAS, sometimes there are questions that are not good questions. And so, we, we report those and then they fix them. And then, you know, you don't, but that takes, that takes a process to do that. So, in particular, there was one that I saw and I thought, oh, my gosh, that question is a terrible question. I got the concept of it, but the, the way that the test creator wrote, wrote it was just, it wasn't good. There was another question that somebody passed along to me, and it actually, the, the answer stems weren't even in the, the question. And so, you know, that's not the, you might say, it said something about which one is the pronoun, and the three choices, all three of those choices, none of those words were in the sentence. So, I'm like, well, there's no way you could do that. So, we quickly passed that along because those, those have to get improved. And so, we're, we're working with them, we're, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to get that. It does take some time. We're gonna look a whole lot better, just like any other schools. The, the process is gonna be a whole lot better over time. We are learning a lot, we are listening to our families. They are giving us good feedback. I have spent hours going over the feedback from the survey that just came out. And I think, just so you know, there's, I believe as of this morning, there were three hundred and thirty-one or maybe a three hundred and thirty-five families that had filled that out. And I do know some families, they asked me if we have the mom who's working with one child, the dad who's working with another child, and the grandma who's working with another child, can we fill it out three times? Absolutely, because I think each person may have a different experience. In some cases, one is having a really good experience with one child and not a good experience with another child. So, we're trying to figure out like, what, what is the characteristic that's causing one to have a really good experience with Edgenuity and say it's really engaging and one not? So, you know, kids are different. And so, you know, it's no different from if you're teaching in-person and you do a strategy and it works really well with these three kids and not very well with these three kids. And so, that one-size-fits-all model is just, you know, it, we're, you know, just like everybody else. It's, I would say, everybody in the nation, you know, it's, it's very difficult, difficult. Marshalltown School District is doing, they have, they have Edgenuity, they are, they have rolled theirs out. Their, their Return to Learn Plan in that portion looks exactly like ours, as does, you know, many, many districts across the state of Iowa and elsewhere. So, we, we have constant conversations. Stephanie, I believe, just talked, I think you said that last week at your UEN meeting, it was pretty much the predominant conversation and actually maybe just the one agenda item. So, anyway, I just wanted to share that, you know, I would really urge parents to call us. We, we, we know it needs improvement. And so, any parents who are listening to this, we usually, we don't get a lot of viewers, but I looked it up to see, we usually get about a hundred to a hundred and fifty viewers of this particular tape. So, we will get out to those hundred and fifty. But, you know, when we call the parents that left their name and then continue to put out information, I think it's going to help just to establish that conversation. There were a couple of suggestions about establishing like an advisory committee or to establish like weekly or bi-weekly communication or little newsletters like, hey, did you know this? And so, we've got some people working on some little videos that we can send out, like here's tips and, you know, did you know that it could do this? And so, you know, we're, we're, we're putting a lot of effort behind it, but we definitely want our, you know, our parents who are using the virtual option to know that, you know, their kids matter just as much as a student who is chosen in-person. And so, you know, we've got work ahead and it's gonna be a significant portion. So, we will be coming back and giving you guys more information. We'll be doing, probably at some point in time, we'll be doing an update just to show you. And I know a couple of you wanted to see what the Edgenuity looked like. I did put the video in the weekly update, so you can log in and see that. Well, that was a couple of weeks ago. But, you know, if you, if you need more, we can certainly run, run a simulation and, you know, putting videos up, videos out for parents too. So, anyway, that was just a little bit of an update. Obviously, lots of work ahead, and it is a significant portion of, of our Return to Learn Plan. So, definitely work in progress, and I'll stop there.
May I ask a quick question in regards to that? Not my board.
Well, you can start down at that end.
Yeah, you can start, go for it.
Go right there.
You're, you're the one I'm starting with tonight anyway.
Okay. In that process of looking at things, are we also looking at maybe having more engagement with the teacher? I mean, I know that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for saying that, yes. I, I don't know why I didn't write that down. So, you know, a couple of the parents that I had talked with last week, they had several options or several suggestions, and actually some suggestions to use community members. So, we actually just worked on that today. So, I believe that there will be more opportunities. The, the one thing that came out loud and clear on the other side of the, the feedback was some parents didn't necessarily want it to be at a particular time because they believed that their children wouldn't be able to take part in that. So, we talked about having a blend of things that are pre-recorded and that we can put out and say, hey, here's a, you know, hey, first graders, here's an activity I'm gonna do with you, but that parents could log in at their own, at their own time or that they would maybe do it at ten o'clock on a particular day. And so, you could either log in in-person or it would be video, you know, recorded and then put out later. So, you're gonna see, I think you're gonna see some more in that area. We actually talked about, you know, like the who, the logistics of who can record it, who can do this, what it would look like. So, yeah, we're definitely working on that to get more connections. Yeah, so, good question, thank you.
I just want to clarify, as far as like virtual teachers versus in-classroom teachers, they're not always the same teacher or are they the same teacher?
They are not the same teacher.
Okay.
They are not the same teacher. Some districts have done that and, you know, it's fifty-fifty. Neither one of them is, is perfect. I, to use a personal example, I've got a, you know, a sister-in-law who's teaching and she has some and some and is probably working ninety to a hundred hours a week, you know, making it work. And she's, you know, and she's, you, you heard the letter tonight too. So, neither one is, neither one is perfect, but there are definitely some advantages of that too. So.
Okay.
Yeah, but ours are not. Okay, thank you.
So, there's no case of a teacher doing both?
There is not, and if they're, if, not, not in general. There may be a couple of situations where we have one teacher working with, you know, for like, I don't, Stephanie, are there any examples? We talked about a couple of different things. Stephanie, are there any examples? We talked about a couple of different things. Special needs, there's some, we just worked today with like IJAG. There's going to be potentially some virtual issues there, but not our virtual options there, but not as a general rule.
So the reference earlier was incorrect?
I'm not sure what the reference was. Which one are you talking about?
It said teachers were, had a real problem, shouldn't be expected to do both virtual and in-person.
Right. That's kind of why I brought that up.
Oh, you mean, oh, no, that is, yep, that is not happening. No, they're not. No, I think that was just a, in response to some things that they had been hearing. Do you, do you want to say something? It was in, in response to something they had been hearing. So they just want to make sure that that was a concern. Last one.
Okay.
Yeah.
What do we say?
The W A is concerned that we would go the route some other districts are at teacher.
Right.
Would do both.
Doing both.
Thank you. I remember. Okay. Thank you.
I know, but that was the accusation from the W A that we were doing that.
I don't think it was.
No, they were asking.
You got a copy of that letter from, I think Pam's already forwarded, so you can go back and look. I don't think that was the reference.
They're worried about.
Yeah.
They don't want to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was a just the letter.
But India, you have the floor. I gave it to you.
You did.
You may continue if you have more comments.
I don't have any more comments. That was it. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. And Jesse?
All right, well, I'll just comment that, you know, I, I would support the decision we made of not making our teachers do both virtual and, and in-person. It's hard enough as it is in the vibrant right now. I think teaching as it is, you know, all the extra things. And I think having too much, too much would just, would put a heavy stress load that, you know, it's stressful enough for all of us right now. So I, I liked the route we went and hopefully continue that route. So comment there. I'll bring up some, give a little one above the line here. I, I do think that one, both football teams will be having playoffs games. And I do believe, if somebody correct me, is we will have the first ever home football game at Memorial Stadium in two weeks. I don't think we've hosted a home game at that stadium.
Yeah, yes, yes.
A playoff game?
Playoff game.
We had one two thousand and twelve.
Walking knowledge.
Yeah, they did.
He's hosted. Okay. I, I'm thinking there's not been many. So this is a rarity. So. Yeah.
Yeah. So East is playing, or West is playing Fort Dodge.
They won it here at Memorial.
He's good.
Yeah. There's not been too many. So this is a rarity. So it was, it's nice to see that. And then just, I know Mr. Huff's been busy working on it in the, you know, the A D's in the building. But just a big improvement in our middle school cross-country program. Those, that program had been lower in numbers and was a little disjointed. And they've made some improvements this year and our girls' numbers are up. Last year, I think we had one girl run, if that's accurate. And the last time, last race I saw, we had ten girls run. So that's, that's difficult improvement. And our boys are actually being very, have been very competitive. So a lot of work for the people working to, to shore up that program. So.
Sue. Thanks, Jesse.
Well, I first have to also comment to some of the letters that it, it's a bit, bit discerning to me that when someone says that our comments and they're directed in an arrogant manner and we're minimizing. And I have a, I have difficulty with that because I, I think we were all thrown into this situation. And when the parents signed up for online, did they not sign an agreement that the parent would work with the student so many hours? Was that not something the parents signed? Okay.
Was the suggested amount of time?
Right.
So it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't a contract, but it was a, hey, here's the guidelines.
But so I think that people were aware that this is a new system, a new product that we're giving out to our students. And to criticize, I, I just, I just have some issues with that. And I feel bad that people feel that way because this country is based on choice and you chose that option and you knew the parameters of the option. You didn't know exactly what the program was going to be provided. And, and obviously it's not perfect. There's a lot of issues and we're aware of that. But like Dr. Lindemann said, I think all of our students are super important to us. But to criticize it for a choice that you made also, I think there is some ownership for the parents also. You know, that when, when they said they would help their student, they knew they weren't a teacher. They knew they weren't an expert on, on a, online program. So I just, I just, I, I feel bad that people feel that, we feel that way about our students because that was never intended. And I think that they were given parameters when they started this, not all knowns. And I would never say they had all knowns, but we all make choices in life. And, and obviously we've given options to change choice in midstream, which lots of people don't do that. But, and I would concur also with not having our staff do both online. And I just have talked to so many people, like you said, I have a daughter-in-law that's a first-year teacher and she's working and eighty to ninety hours and crying every night. You know, it's hard. It's really hard to do that. So I, I do respect that we are allowing our staff, even though I would hope we could potentially get a little more contact than, you know.
For sure.
At, with the teacher. Cause I do believe in the validity of the teacher-student relationship. And I think that's powerful too. But, and then on a positive, I would like to commend the East High J R O T C. They have just done an amazing job. And I did actually see, you know, the citizens and the character counts. They are hosting a blood drive coming up. And it's going to be November sixth, a Friday from ten to two. And they're going with the Black Hawk County veterans. And it's going to be at the Pinecrest Building and on Independence Avenue. So you can sign up for slots to go donate blood. That's sponsored by the East High Junior R O T C, which I think is just another really great way to build character, to donate, to hold a blood drive, to just look at how you can help others in different situations. So thank you to the East High J R O T C.
And Sue, well, she's calling. The one thing I do want to say is we are trying to offer as much grace to our families and our students and our parents as, as we are asking for from them. So I know, you know, that people chose whatever they want, but they, they, they may have not. They didn't know everything either. And so, and we've changed some of the parameters. So people signed up and a lot of parents, and I get this, I, I get it. They were, you know, you didn't have anything to compare it to, so you compared it to last spring and here's how it was last spring. And this is way different. So people, you know, came in expecting one thing and got something different. And so it's like you think you're buying a Ford and you get a, you know, something completely different. And so we are offering grace all around because there, there are, there is, it is a work in progress for everyone. And so we appreciate the grace that is given and we want to make sure that we are offering that too. So it's improvements ahead. They, they are coming. They are, as a matter of fact, a lot of the things that were mentioned today have already been addressed. And some of them were actually quick resolves and they've already been fixed. So, I mean, we appreciate people saying something because that collaborative spirit is what allows us to get better. A year from now, we're not going to be dealing with these issues for one reason or the other. Because we don't need to or because we've gotten better. So I'm hoping it's first.
Almost made it around without mind being taken.
He's still got half the board over there, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Sue got me though. I'd like to all, also congratulate again Lieutenant Colonel Glenn Keith and the East High Junior R O T C. I've seen this program up close and have a, a son who's, this is his first semester involved in the program. So the representation of good citizenship, the community involvement and the leadership skills that they provide and, and show is definitely needed in the community. And, and glad for them to be recognized in this manner. I know I was, I said something and I kind of said it when he was speaking about the food bank. My son went volunteered at the food bank with J R O T C. On his, it was actually supposed to be in-class thing. And you have students going on their off A B opposite day. So that shows a lot as well because they didn't have to do that, you know. So just, you know, like I said, the representation of good citizenship, the community involvement and the leadership skills. And kudos to everybody who runs that. So that's all I have.
Okay. Oh, Sue, I just, I did have the, the letters that parents received. So their, their acceptance letter said that it was recommended that they were going to work three to six hours and that they were going to be able to contact teachers and, and get questions answered. So that's what they thought. But then after, after that, then they were given the information which said it's, you have to do four hours and you're only going to talk to a teacher every three weeks. So I don't think they're try, I don't think parents are trying to say, you guys are just dismissing everything. I think it's more like, we didn't know what we were getting into. And that's for everybody. We didn't know what we were getting into. So I don't think we should take it personally, you know? It's, it's hard. It's hard. I, it would be hard to be in that position. I wanted to congratulate India because she's going to be our delegate representative, which is so cool. I have a big smiley face. I'm like, India, yay. I want to thank all the virtual teachers because like you said, they are working so hard. I can't imagine. I can't. And they are trying to make sure that they're meeting these kids' needs and working hours and hours and hours. And I have not heard a single virtual parent say that they are dissatisfied with their teacher. They love all of them. And the, oh, for parents just to continue to pass on what they've been doing because it's great. I mean, Dr. Lindemann has been able to take that information and already implement changes. And it makes the community then feel like a community. We've been so fractured because of COVID for so long. And now people feel like they're able to come back together and get, and give their feedback. And yeah, so anyway, thank you.
Last but not least, Lyle.
Oh, yes, of course.
Oh, I guess I am last.
Um, I guess looking forward, I would request two things. First of all, as soon as possible, academic achievement results for both in-person and virtual in a disaggregated manner. Because particularly on the virtual, I'm guessing that it's working really well for some, kind of well for the most and not at all for some. And those not at alls are really at risk, I think. And so if we can get some disaggregated data and then, and then not continue necessarily with the existing program, we may have to customize it. I mean, well, okay. And then along with that would be a report on what's really our continuous improvement plan of action for both programs, but particularly virtual. You know, virtual's new, so you would expect the improvement curve to be a lot steeper. And but I don't know, you know, what we're doing. I would just like to understand what, what we're doing, but it has to be done quickly. Because time is, you know, time is of the essence. In terms of ingenuity, you know, I just shake my head like I do going through every textbook. Why are we given half-baked, unproven products? You know, it's just, just blows my mind. The questions, the examples you gave. The whole idea of testing on something you haven't taught, which is apparently there, we heard it four times. What in the world? Why would anybody put out a product like that? And somebody mentioned, maybe it was Jane, that something, wait until next year or something like that. Well, my expectation, and, and we ought to hopefully agree on this and tell ingenuity, when we call you, you need to fix it real time. Like this question is really bad and thirty seconds later, it's deleted off the whole program. If they're not working in real time, you know, then we really do need somebody else or we need to do it ourselves. So I think in terms of the, those that it's not working at all for, we maybe do need to, one of the initiatives and the continuous improvement of virtual would be, okay, we're going to develop it ourselves because we can't find anything that works. So, you know, at least consider that because what we can't have, and I don't care if it's just five percent of the kids, that essentially fall so far behind, their life is ruined. They'll never reach the American dream. They'll never, you know, we're going to have a twenty-four seven Wall Street report all over again in thirty years or twenty years if we continue to let this happen. So I really, I really think we need to, you know, even if the achievement results aren't perfect and I wouldn't expect them to, just a gradual, you know, some general information about how are we doing? And like I say, particularly in virtual broken down. And then, because the more you know about it, the more you can, can customize or fix it for those that need it. And in addition, all this information, if we do provide it to the parents, then they can make a better choice. Particularly, so it needs to be done in time for the next, after, before the trimester's up or certainly before the semester's up. So that's, that's kind of our, my response to what I've heard.
And Lyle, I'd like to add to the piece about, you know, how our kids are doing, but the kids that aren't logging on at all and, and where we are.
Yep.
Because that gets back to my concern. Yes, I, I care about Waterloo kids, but I care about this county, this city, what we're doing. We're going to, this gap that we're going to have. And we're not the only district. I'm not saying that. But I think that, that where, where are those students going to be? Because if they haven't been in school for six months in any way, shape or form, let alone whether it's working or not, I'm talking about just off the radar, that's not good. So I just want to add to your list.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Please go to conferences, everybody.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. That was on my list. That was my last thing. Yeah. See, I can't win. So conferences are tomorrow from four to seven and they are Thursday from noon to eight. You can do them virtually. You can sign up to do them in-person. Reach out, talk to your kid's teacher. Just going to say that. So that was my thing. No, you're fine. You're fine. I know. It's all right. And our next board meeting will be here, we will be back in this room on October twenty-sixth for our next meeting. So that being said, if there's no further information to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Astor and Sue, thank you. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night, everybody.